Okay, it's nine o'clock. So we're gonna call this meeting to order. Young ladies, young ladies, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Don't make me throw y'all out of court first on your trip back here. So we're gonna call this meeting, our regular meeting of the Commissioners Court, to order here on the 11th day of August 2025 at 9:00 a.m. here at the courthouse. This morning, it's a pleasure, and he probably don't need an introduction, but it's a pleasure for me to introduce my friend and my retired pastor to lead us in our invocation today, and then we'll do the pledge, and then we've got a few special guests here that we wanted to recognize today. But without further ado, Brother Clint Davis, everybody knows him, but we appreciate you coming and leading us in prayer today.
Yes, sir. For our parade girls, will y'all listen to these folks standing up here? They represent us. We can all show up every week and make the decisions that affect our lives and take care of our lifestyle and community. And so we have elections. We elected these folks to represent us. And so, in effect, they are here for us, and we need to pray for them and encourage them, their chance would give, because they're making decisions that they think are best for us and best for our community, and that's a blessing for all of us. That's why I'm gonna pray for them today, okay? Let's pray to them. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for a beautiful morning and for the opportunity to be here in this place and to be a part of this process. And Father, I thank you for this community, and you give us a blessing to live in Titus County. It's a great place, and you made it that way, and we're grateful. Thank you for these who have been elected to represent us in service. I thank you for Judge Cooper, for every Commissioner. Now, I pray, Father, that you will give them wisdom beyond their natural ability. You'll give them insight into complicated situations. Father, I pray that you will protect them from the enemy if you want to seduce them close away. Father, keep them from that desire to pursue political expediencies and do the thing that the body can best. Father, bless their lives and their families and their homes. We thank you for your love for us and for what you're going to do today. Christ, amen. In prayer.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Brother Clint. Number one, public comments and requests of information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I don't believe we have anyone wants to speak today. Number two, consider possibly approve the minutes for the July 28, 2025 special meeting of the Commissioners Court.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the minutes from July 28.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number three, big day here, and it's getting to be kind of a tradition. We had these girls in here last year from getting second in the state, and they're back this year and placed second in the eight U-State Tournament held down there in Park, Houston.
New Caney.
New Caney, but represented Titus County well, and we'll get their coach to come up and speak on them. We've also got a special guest here, Coach Kate Cluley. Coach Clue had to start football this morning, so we've got the assistant football coach here, and she may have to leave as soon as this is over and get the football practice. Kate, it's good to see you here, and you get them Tigers ready to go for Friday nights, all right? All right. Ms. Rachel.
All right. Hey, thanks, everybody, for having us today. I don't think I need the microphone. I think I'm loud enough without it.
What did New York say on the TV this morning?
Well, they'll be fine. So I would just like to say thanks for having us. These girls did an outstanding job this season. We went to district, ended up beating who we like to call our rival, Silver Springs, knocked them out. That was a good feeling. Then went to East Montgomery County and played nine games in three days. We went seven and two. We ended up getting beat early by a team that we beat out later on the championship Sunday, and then won our first game of the championship series and then dropped the last one to the undefeated team. So super proud of them and just all their accomplishments this season. And so I'm gonna call each one of y'all up, and if y'all will go up there, and if parents want a picture with Judge Cooper, y'all can do that. All right, so first, we've got Presley Prefort, who played catcher a little bit for us, played in the outfield for us, made sure nothing got by her. You want a picture?
Oh, yeah. Get a picture.
Don't worry. Don't worry. All right, then we got our third baseman, Paige Cameron, who was unstoppable, had great at bats, robbed a couple people of some major hits going down third base line. All right, Matt Vaught is gonna be next. She played first base for us throughout All-Stars, did an incredible job, and was our leadoff hitter.
Sometimes.
All right, then Bailey Thurman, she played outfield for us, had some clutch at bats, and I think maybe had a game-winning at bat at one point or another. That might have been Halsworth. It all runs together. All right, Ariel Alvarez, she also played in the outfield for us. I think you actually ended up catching one game or two as well.
Sure. It gives more for less.
All right, and then Evelyn Buchanan, she was our shortstop, made some incredible plays, as well as had some really good at bats that brought in a ton of runs throughout those nine games.
She looked real sad in here, didn't she?
I know. What's the deal with that? All right, and then MJ Cluley. MJ played second base for us, as well as hit, hit for us, I think, sixth, maybe? All right, and then Destiny Martinez. Destiny played the outfield. I will tell you, she is all over the place out there, gonna track down anything you hit out there. She is on it. All right, and then Lexi Ramirez. Lexi also played the outfield for us, and same thing, nobody, nothing was getting by our outfield out there, and had some really great at bats that drove in a lot of runs. And I think we're missing Jade Posey. She caught for us throughout All-Stars. Who else is that? Caroline Rodarte, she is awesome. She played pitcher for us.
Well, Facebook was a wonderful time, and I was a vet down there once in a while, but I got to see you there once in a while on Facebook, and I want to talk to you over here and extend the trouble to us, and I think I got some left, a little music. I think y'all did a lot of things before every game. And I'll show you.
Hey. Hey. Just think.
(singing) From the way to follow my sin, I need a friend to come on.
Hey, you can teach him how to do it.
(singing) When I'm broken down inside.
Hey, y'all know school starts next week.
Why did I skip it?
Get ready.
(singing) I'm the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. I said, "Sure, I'm sorry, yeah." (singing) I'm the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. (singing) I'm the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. (singing) I'm the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. (singing) I'm the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah.
Thank you all for that.
(laughing)
(singing) I think you're the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. (singing) I think you're the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah. (singing) I think you're the one that would you put my heart in, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Brother Clint.
Thank you, Brother Clint. Enjoy it.
Wow, it got pretty quiet in here. It did. It's always good to have them. That's the second year in a row that they've been to state and got second, and proud of them, and we've got a boys' team that'll be coming here in a couple weeks to be recognized as well. All right, number four, considering possibly take a record vote on the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2026. Budget got their package there. It is an increase this year. I want to talk a little bit about that before we do vote on that. We did cut some things back over the last few years, but we did have some things that come up. I'm not calling Sheriff Bragg out, but he brought to our attention that we hadn't had any radios in about 20 something years. We could have cut that back, but if we do something like that, God forbid we have a Uvalde or something like that. We had to respond not too long ago to CC's Pizza. Some of these concrete buildings, metal buildings, our police officers cannot communicate with each other, so some of that goes into their budget is the radios and some of the software that we're putting in their cars, which will help expedite a whole lot of our things that are going on from different parts of the county and still have to come all the way back to the jail. We can report that from out on the field and still make another call. And like I said, not calling you out at all, Sheriff Bragg, but we like to be transparent with everything, but could we go without those radios? Maybe. In my opinion, and these Commissioners, we've had several budget meetings, and don't feel it safe to go without those, and our kids are very important. Those radios don't work in three of our schools, maybe four. Mount Pleasant's not out in the county, but Chapel Hill and Hartsbluff, we have trouble communicating. And so with that being said, that's a big part of this increase that we're having to go to in the budget. The budget that I'm presenting y'all today is 731,162 above last year's budget, 17 million. So this year's budget that I'm proposing to you guys today is 18,86243. Like I said, it is an increase. It's all on our webpage. Anybody wants to go and look over it. Some different things that we had to use in our technology. We also had to go over some stuff with our technology as far as getting hacked. There's some places that have been hacked, and so we upped our insurance on that. They'd say all over the state that it's not a, not a matter of when you get hacked, if you get hacked, but when you get hacked. So we had to go up on our cyber security. Commissioners had three different budget workshops, and overall, analysts to approve the budget in the workshop was a net increase of the 731,162 to the general fund, an additional 171,600 to the road and bridge fund, and a $40,000 increase for other funds. That will help each Commissioner with their road materials and also with their employees and that sort of thing. Like I said, the roads are not, not where we want them to be yet, but people say, well, they want grass roads, but they don't want their taxes to be out the roof, and we understand that, and I think we're giving this extra $40,000 that improves our road some as well. We're also gonna have to do a repair across the street. When we come in, there were plans, we had to go back and get plans redrawn, and have got a good set of plans that we've looked at. They're coming now to make sure that the base on there can be extended far enough and with the structure. So that's looking at a little over a million dollars for that project, so that's something else that we had to put into our budget. The property tax current collection rate is up this year, about 2%. Melissa's here today. We appreciate that. We've got Purdue, which we hired back last year. They'll be here later on in the next month or two months, and they'll produce what they have come up with in collections, but Melissa and her staff's done a good job in bringing that up over there. The inmates, as Sheriff Bragg back there can tell us, that's up $172,000, and if you hang around a little bit longer for the budget amendments, we've got food that we've run out of money on that, and so we're having to move some more money over there to take care of our jail. Our tax rate, which we'll talk about in the next item there, will go to the voter approval rate, I hope, but with that being said, everybody's saying it's just one cent, and we started here in '23, with the two previous years before us. 2021, the tax rate was .469. In 2022, it was .4263. When we come in in '23 and set our budget, it was .376, which was a savings, and it was even below the no new revenue. In 2024, it was .37, and this year, just a little bit later, we'll be introducing a .38. And I know that's just a cent, and it's below the voter approval rate, and it's just a cent added to that. We've been working hard. The only way to increase your revenue is either go up on taxes or bring in new businesses. We've got Illuminas coming in, hopefully to start breaking dirt into this year, and hopefully the sooner they get in production, the better that helps us, and that brings in about 500,000 to 600,000 for the county once we get them fully going, which will be great benefit to us. But with us going to the voter approval rate, I want people to understand, no salaries were increased this year through the county. That hurts our employees, we know that, but we also had some additional problems that we had there. Our insurance, health insurance, went up 6% this year, which is another $86,000 that we had to add into our budget. The Sheriff's Department, like I said, it seems like I'm picking on Chris today, but it's not really him. We've fallen behind in that, and so that's a little over $546,000. The repair across the street, which I've already mentioned, is a million, million and a half. The maintenance in the contingency will be 1.7 million, and 500,000 of that is still in there in our contingents. The special revenue funds, the road and bridges expenditures are gonna be at 834,100 for all the precincts, which includes a 40, almost $43,000 raise for these Commissioners and trying to help them a little bit with their, with their road materials. The debt service has been decreased by about $6,000 this year. I just applied with my assistant here, and Ms. Nannetta, make a stand on top of me, for 8.3 million that we get from text dot every year for our loop. People ask us how much debt the county has. We've got about $80 million worth of debt, but we still get 8.3. The bottom figure that we can get is 8.43 million from the text dot each year to pay that note off, and that's not something that these Commissioners did that went out for voter approval, and so that's, that's a debt we have, but it's not just a debt that we made. The voters of Titus County made that. And then we're maintaining the use of our service debt fund, about $350,000 to reduce our debt services. Our fund balances in 2024 were 13,679,752, and an estimation of about minus $770, and that's gonna leave us a fund balance of 2,909. Did I correct that?
12 million.
12 million. I should have said 2 million, I'm sorry. My glasses didn't get that one. Yes, don't, don't, don't get, as soon as that goes public, then everybody will be firing their phones up that we went from 13 million to 2 million dollars fund balance. No, we're still at 12, and I know some people like to look at that and say, we've got a little over an $18 million budget, so with us to have a 12 million dollar fund balance is still adequate in case, in case disaster hits. But we're working hard to bring in new businesses. We don't want just any business. The Illuminas that we're bringing in, it's very, very green-friendly, air filters and stuff. I know there's been a lot of complaints about the air around lately. This will be no effect, and there'll be no effect to our landfills, which is very huge for our landfill. So with that being said, the budget that I'm proposing today is that of 18 million. I guess I need to say it one more time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we use the budget of 18,86243 for our budget for the 2026 year.
I'll make a motion to take the proposed budget.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the 2026 budget of 18,86243.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number five, consider possibly take a record vote on proposed tax rate for the fiscal year ending in September 30, 2026. Read a little bit. This means something to some people, and some people it doesn't, but I like to have it on record so that we're not just voting on something that we don't know. This is also be on our website, anybody that wants that, or if they'd like to request a copy, I think certainly I can do that as well. The M and O for, for the total estimate, tax rate would be .3253. The I and S would be .0377.
That's last year's.
That's what last year's was. We're gonna go through it and then next year.
Oh, oh, that's.
But if you want.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
And so, but with that being said, those were what our rates were last year, and as Melissa, I've already kind of commented on this, I've kind of got ahead of myself. Last year, our prior year collection was 93.60%, and this year is 94.5, and that's critical with you and Purdue as well, and they'll bring us some numbers to go over with in a month or so. The new rates for this year that we're proposing in the 2026, the current tax rate on the P and O, on the M and O, is .3253. The I and S is .0377 for a total of .3630. That's on the no new revenue rate. And then on the voter approval rate, on the M and O, it will be .3442, and on the I and S would be 0.419, giving us a total of .3861 for our voter approval rate. And like I was, wanna say, when they started in 2021, it was .469. When it, 2022, it went to .4263, and then we adopted two different rates there. We went to .376 and below the voter, non, non-new revenue rate, and then in 2024, we went to .37, which was still below the no new revenue rate, and that's why I feel like today that we're here at the .38, still below the voter approval rate of the .3861. I feel like this is huge for us. We've got the budget that we just approved of the 18 million, which adds things into our roads to help you guys with your roads a little bit, and also to take care of our Sheriff's Department and get them up to date and to protect our citizens of Titus County. I know it's a, it's an increase. We don't like to do that. I hate that we didn't get to give raises this year. That's always not a, not a good subject, but it's the, what we've got to do this year and not get our rate too high.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed tax rate.
On which one? Would that be on the voter approval rate?
Voter approval rate.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the voter approval rate, which is .3861. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Ms. Lameck can step out, go downtown. Number six, consider and possibly approve the order to adopt the Titus County Clerk's Office Records Archive Plan for the fiscal year 2026.
We have been fortunate to secure a preservation company that has offered its preservation services at a lower cost than the previous provider utilized by previous county clerks. Thereby, it enabled my department to save money on the 2025 archive project and in the future, facilitating the preservation of more documents in a shorter timeframe than we originally planned because of the cost of the previous provider. And this year, I am going to be preserving the probate documents, which will be starting with, let me see. I believe 1980 and going backwards, because we have pretty much started preserving documents digitally before that, as we became more digital with the previous county clerk. So we're gonna work our way back from the most recent, because most people are looking for that. I did have a customer that contacted me about an issue with her not being able to find documents that were archived in our system, but she was looking for documents from 1895 to 1900, and unfortunately, those documents were not preserved before they were put into books where they were laminated and everything and made sure that they were taken care of. So that is not something available at this point. We are working on probate, because probate is what is helping our lithium companies come in to help bring more money into our county and for our citizens. And I just wanted to, I think I gave all of y'all a copy of it, and Judge, I believe you have the original, so that everybody can sign that. I appreciate your help. Do you have any questions?
We approve the.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the new county clerk's records archive plan for 2026. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, consider and possibly approve the bid for the 2025-002 Law and Maintenance from Lewis Crane Hoist LLC, and it's gone up just a slight bit to the 1250. Hadn't gone up in the last two years. I spoke with the DPS Department to make sure that the weigh station was being mowed. Wayne got the sprinklers going back around here, so you can tell, notice when the grass is green and growing, if they're doing their job, but it seems like they're doing well. I checked the, back behind the annex over there, and they are taking care of those two flower beds that we did have a little bit of problem with last year. This was the only bid that we did receive as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the law and maintenance bid for '25.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number eight, consider and possibly approve the application for funding the Senate Bill SB 22, the Sheriff's Office and Salary Assistant Grant and Equipment, and that's $350,000, and I'm assuming that Sheriff Bragg is okay with that?
I'm making a motion to approve.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the SB 22 money for the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number nine, consider and possibly approve the application for funding the Senate Bill 22 Prosecutor's Office, which is the county attorney's, and their grant is 175,000. John Mark's not here today, but he has asked that we approve that grant again as well, and so we just need a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve the funding of the prosecution office.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 10, consider and possibly approve the application for funding for the Senate Bill 22, the Prosecutor's Office, which is the district attorney, and that's Mr. Bailey for 175, and I spoke with him as well, and he is wanting us to apply for that for him as well.
I'll make a motion to apply for the SB 22.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to apply for the SB 22 for the Prosecutor's Office and the District Attorney's Office.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously as well. Number 11, approve oral and written report.
That's bringing our feeding of the prisoners are running about 300 to 350,000. It's steadily going up, so thank you.
Motion to approve those amendments.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
We've got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those budget amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to pay the bills.
Second.
Second by Commissioner parchment. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. By Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. Number 15, closing comments. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I just hope we get some rain.
We need a little rain.
Dana, you ready?
I just want to say, I want to thank y'all for the budget hearings that we did have and working with me and giving me your ideas on what you needed. Ms. Nanette, you and your office down there for all the papers that we had to throw away and fight, fuss and get over with. We do appreciate your hard work on this budget. Like I said, it is a slight increase, but some of those things we couldn't get around, I believe. And your office did a great job, Ms. Linda as well, and appreciate y'all's hard work and like I said, I don't know how you do it by running up and down them stairs every day, once in the morning, once in the evening and stuff, but you had to run up and down them a lot for me and appreciate the hard work that you did do on the budget and I think we've got a good budget for the 2026 year. I think it helps everybody, helps our commissioners and then hopefully get some more new businesses here to help us with our income and that way we can even do some more things and grow and we're growing now. We're better together and we're starting to grow together, so glad to have a new company coming and hopefully a few more to lead their way. When they get here, I think a few more will follow.